Welcome. Hello? Are we good? Thank you. Welcome, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. And are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda? Right over here. Thank you. If you could just say your name for us as well, please. Go ahead.
My name is Solisha Kweir. And I just wanted to read a little something from members of the community. It took a village to change the school mascot. And we're grateful to all of the many students who showed courage, determination, and faith, and to the entire body of the Student Diversity Union. We would like to thank one person in particular, Isaiah Hines. Isaiah, you've shown such grace and leadership in the face of tremendous challenges. You've educated and enlightened us to the work we as a community need to do in order to become the best versions of ourselves. We thank you, Isaiah. You have so many wonderful adventures ahead of you. But we'll always think of you as our beloved friend and neighbor.
We are going to be going back into executive session after regular session. And we also have discussed a legal matter related to real estate. So moving on to the mascot selection oversight committee recommendation, and if the folks who are going to present that can come up to where the mics are, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Okay, so we had a different plan.
Okay.[140.12][140.12](Laughter). Nothing if not flexible.
Sorry.
No, 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 please.
There's a, there are a number of folks involved in the presentation. And so it's all saying to you, Martin, we were targeting this X spot.
That's, that's perfect. If, if we have a mic that we could use, is there, is that mic going to work to there?
That says "do not touch" on it. So.[168.45][168.45](Laughter).
True.
Yeah, either one of those.
Is that okay?
I can untake one more strand and then we can do a little closer.
If this is working for RETN, is this working for you, RETN? Is that good enough? Okay. And Stuart, can you do me a favor and turn the projector on? Thanks. So, hi, everyone. My name is Patrick Burke, and I'm proud to be principal at South Burlington High School. And I have with me today all of the, or nearly all the members of the new mascot selection committee. And Mr. Schlenter and I, middle school principal, co-chaired this committee this year. And we're here to tell you a little bit about our work, and we're excited to make our recommendation. Our intention for tonight's presentation is to follow a resolution format. And so all the members of the committee will read different sections of a resolution that we will then present to this, to the school board. If people have questions, we would ask that the questions be directed to the board in terms of, we were authorized by the board and charged by the board to do this work. And also just, Mr. Schlenter's going to talk a little bit in the, subsequent to me, about our process and, and where people can find out more information about that. So I'm going to shift into role of, of computer operator. And my pleasure to introduce Mr. Schlenter.
Do you want to do introduction?
Oh, I'm sorry. After you introduce yourself.
Okay, let's do that. Well, good evening. I'm Carson Schlenter, middle school principal. I had the pleasure to co-chair the committee. And, you know, I want to thank all the members. It was a very pleasurable process, I have to say. And we are a large committee, 42 members, and I think we did a fantastic job in a relatively short amount of time to come to some conclusion there. So one of the things we did is we set some group norms. When you have a large committee like that, you want to make sure.
Do you want to introduce yourself first?
Okay, yeah, let's do that. Okay. I'm glad you said that. So Rich, we start with you.
Rich Weis, class of 1973.
Rachel Lumbar, class of 2017.
Shannon Kynock, class of 2003.
Cam England, class of 2019, future executive secretary of South Burlington High School Student Council.[334.16][334.16](Laughter).
Matthew Vigno, class of 2022.
Jeff Favreau, former school resource officer at the middle school here, parent and resident.
Jacob Davis, class of 2021.
Solly Richards, class of 2022.
Will Hirschberg, class of 2023.
Maureen Reese, you don't want another class.[359.03][359.03](Laughter).
Class of 67, parent and grandparent.
Yasha Rutanera, class of 2023.
Sophie Boff, class of 2019.
Carla Duke, class of 2019.
Gabe Lambert, class of 2019.
Max Kay, class of 2021.
Andrea Dion, SB parent.
Lisa Hebert, SB parent.
Aye Nehemi, class of 2011.
Liana Baugh, alumni director and parent.
Ryan Avon, class of 1993.
Joey Goodeck, representative of the central office.
Sarah Letalow, parent and high school teacher.
Chris Lee, class of 2005.
In the back, didn't introduce himself.
Luke White, class 2003, element class of 2035.[423.72][423.72](Laughter).
We have a large committee, again, 42 committee members. And again, thank you very much for everything. We did have group norms, you know, make sure we start on time, end on time, those kind of things. Make sure, assume good intentions, listen, participate. And I think everybody did a fantastic job. But the most important piece, I think, was transparency. We wanted to make sure that everybody had access to the information, and you still do. There is a committee website on the South Burlington High School page. And so all of the information you can obtain there, including the surveys that were administered Anyone entering South Burlington High School sees four words: building a proud tradition. These words were carefully selected to represent the essence of our mission. And while the word tradition suggests things that remain the same, the word building suggests something far less static. The heart of this committee's work has been the very delicate task of respecting traditions from the past while building upon a vision for the future. Continuity and change are not only compatible, but should be celebrated as the South Burlington School community strives for continuous improvement in line with its core values. The challenge for our community as we go forth is to revere both continuity and change. The committee holds a deep respect and gratitude to those who are instrumental in building South Burlington's proud tradition. It is our responsibility as a community to honor our past while we stand shoulder to shoulder embracing a vision for a more unified future. It is a privilege to have worked as members of the new mascot selection committee. Our commitment to representing all of the members of our school and larger community with enthusiasm and respects makes us very proud to now present our recommendation to the South Burlington Board of School Directors.
Whereas, the new mascot committee recognizes the vital role of school spirit and respects the proud traditions forged by South Burlington alumni.
Whereas, generations of South Burlington Rebel teams have represented our school and city with honor and spirit.
Whereas, the school board has an ongoing responsibility to continue to build our proud tradition, working in concert with all the current and future students and families of South Burlington.
Whereas, the new mascot selection committee was charged by the school board to use criteria in overseeing a process culminating with a new and unifying mascot name and identifier for South Burlington High School and Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School.
Whereas, the committee, made up of student representatives from the classes of 2017 to 2023, parents, alumni, high school and middle school teachers, staff, principals, and central office, developed an inclusive process and considered the input of both the student body and the larger community.
Whereas, three student polls narrowed over 70 approved suggestions to 12 semifinalists and three finalists.
Whereas, the final poll indicated Wolves as the students' preferred new mascot and...
Whereas, Wolves are fiercely loyal animals, organized in supportive packs with powerful instincts, high intelligence, highly developed communication skills, self-confidence, and strength, and therefore symbolizes worthy characteristics for a mascot.
Now, therefore, we, the South Burlington School District Mascot Selection Oversight Committee, do hereby recommend that the school board officially adopt Wolves as our new mascot and identifier for the purpose of enabling a unified and spirited school community. As the youngest and most senior members of the committee, we are pleased and proud to present these to you, the school board.[713.08][713.08](Applause).
First, are there any questions from the board or any comments from the board?
I'd like to say thank you for doing such a large amount of work in such a short period of time. We know we gave you quite a task to do all of this between February 1st and the end of the school year. And well done for all the meetings and all the effort that you put in. So thank you.
Yes, I thank you. Thank you as well. Are there any questions or comments from the, from the public? In that case, just a couple of quick comments. I don't think I could have said it any better than Rich Weis, that we are certainly trying to honor our past, but we are looking to have a more unified school mascot. And I think the Wolves is a terrific choice. And I will take a motion to adopt the recommendation of the committee.
Still moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you very much. Ken.[826.37][826.37](Applause). So the next item on the agenda is the student representative report and announcements. Isaiah and Alex.
The SBHS Jazz Band performance on Church Street this week as a part of the Discover Jazz Festival occurred. Their performance was moved to Halverson's because of the rain, and the restaurant was packed that day. The big picture, South Burlington had student presentations on their annual service learning term last week. Projects focused on pollinator populations, veterans, and the military, and precious plastics, including the partnering with Burlington's generator maker space. The annual family picnics, as well as field days, are being held at Chamberlain Orchard and Rick Marcott Central School this week and next week. Not even rain stands in the way of family picnics. The families simply enjoyed the lunch indoors. Fifth graders from our three elementary schools have been visiting Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School to learn about their middle school for next year. Their visit includes a performance by the Grade Six Chorus. And the final day of sophomore exhibitions was held, the SBHS, is going to be held at SBHS this week. Sophomore exhibitions are presentations by students about their learning and their core values. They have been preparing all year in advisory for their presentations.
Okay. Let's see. So also, the schedule has been filled with sports playoffs for SBHS for the past few weeks. We are very proud of our sports teams and their hard work. We are very proud of the SBHS class of 2017. Their senior banquet was this week, and as a class, they invited Mr. Burke to be their speaker at graduation, and he accepted the invitation.[968.75][968.75](Applause). Also, the fine arts dessert night and band concerts was last week?
Yeah, this, I think.
This week, maybe?[985.87][985.87](Laughter). And as well as academic awards night, which was last Thursday, I believe. And graduation is next Friday, the 16th, at 10:00 a.m. So, yeah, that's all we have.[1002.25][1002.25](Laughter).
So we're going to take this a little bit out of order because I've been instructed by Principal Burke to be on time, and for once, we're ahead of time. So we're, we're just going to jump up to the city and school collaboration. And if you can give us an update, David?
So for those of you who don't know, we, both the chair, Elizabeth Fitzgerald, who's not able to be here tonight, and myself, meet on a regular basis with Helen Reilly and Kevin Dorn, the city manager. We do that about once a month. We have met, the last time we met, I don't think I have any real new thing to report, although continued collaboration, both city and school, around our budgets. We had a steering committee meeting. Voting information will be kind of, some updates that will be provided back to the, back to the board and the city council on how, how that all came out. So that's pretty much all I have to report. We'll have more, I think, after our next meeting.
Martin? That was supposed to take about five minutes, but that's...
It's rare that I'm quick, too, but...
And, and we'll bounce ahead to number nine, budget results. If you could, David.
Yep. So, board, first and foremost, I think the most important thing is to say thank you, community. Thank you, staff. Thank you, school board. You know, many, many people worked hard to inform. And I just want to say, you know, personally, you know, as a superintendent and on behalf of administrators and the teachers, you know, we're, we're, we're very pleased that we have a budget. I think in addition, it's important to recognize that the results of the, of the voting turnout and the board, you, you each have a copy of that at your place. And, you know, I just think it's important, I mean, one of the things, we've been doing this on an ongoing basis for, for, for folks that aren't always at our board meeting. After all of our votes, we try to analyze some of the information specific to the actual district, and the yes, nos, and the totals. And again, we, actually, Martin, I think some, some years ago now, we started to analyze this more. I think, you know, fundamentally, we want to make sure that people get information. We want to make sure people are informed. And we hope that we can answer their questions so that as they vote, they can have clarity around the issues. What you have in front of you, board, is the June 6 data. And you see both the yeses at 60.35% and the nos at 39.65. And the total percentage of our participation this year in our, this, this round was 36.1% of our total registered voters, which is 14,438. So that is up from, if you flip to the previous page, that is up from the, the 24.2% participation that we had back on April 6th. So I will be providing some additional information around kind of the, the voting participation. This, again, it's all, it all comes from here. But this provides you kind of the, the recall. I don't, I don't necessarily need to take you all the way back to, to the start. And one of the things I would say, and I certainly want to recognize, the administrators, we've been, we've been at budget conversation and development starting in September. So this has been a year of in-depth conversations about our budget. And budget presentations, we've gotten better at. I've probably gotten much better, although all, all six, seven presentations, and the last time I went to Channel 17, I was with Bridget, it kind of feels like all of those years, all of those represent years. So I'm getting older very quickly. But anyway. So I don't know if there's any specific questions that the board has about the, the voting information, or if you'd like to ask me or request other information, I'm happy to do so.
So, so I would like to make just a couple of comments. First of all, again, I reiterate David's thanks to the community for coming out to the polls. And it's not just a thank you to the community members who voted for this budget, though I'm, I'm very pleased that more people did vote for the budget than didn't. But it's the people who came out and tried to learn, and even the folks who voted no, we have information that we've gathered, and we now have a better understanding of concerns that individuals have with respect to our budget. So you came here just in time to hear about the budget, guys. This is perfect.[1326.02][1326.02](Laughter). So, any event, we'll let them all get in. So we, we are going to look at some of the issues of sustainability, the trends with respect to enrollment, the trends with respect to the property taxes, and income sensitivity and the like. So it, we did learn a lot from this process, and I think we will take that to heart going forward. And we will be scheduling, probably earlier than September, to start working on some of these issues that caused, you know, over 2,000 people in our community concerned. So I just want to make sure that it's understood that we appreciate everybody who did come to the polls and shared their viewpoint and, and shared in the democracy. So thank you very much.[1370.41][1370.41](Applause). So we are, we are now going to back up because I think, if I'm right, it's okay? All right. We're going to go to number seven, recognition of Isaiah Hines. And I would like to just say a couple of words, and we have a couple of things for you, Isaiah. So Isaiah has served on the South Burlington School Board with distinction as a student representative for the 2016-2017 school year. In addition to being actively involved in the greater community in social justice issues and causes, I see Isaiah has been an active member of the high school community and the entire district community. He was selected by his peers to be secretary of the South Burlington High School Student Council. He is a co-founder and co-leader of the Student Diversity Union. And that organization has hosted a number of public events that have also been, have also mentored the peer leadership students at FH Tuttle Middle School. He was the co-host of the first-ever Ending Mental Health Stigma event organized and led by high school students. And as a member of the SBHS Global Studies class this year, Isaiah attended and presented at the Vermont Global, Global Issues Network Conference at Rutland High School in April. I'm not getting foreclamped, I have a cold.[1464.12][1464.12](Laughter). And I don't want to...
Sure.
Yeah, that's, yeah, all right, I'm getting foreclamped.[1470.41][1470.41](Laughter). All right. Any event, thank you. So in a year that has been difficult for our school and for our greater community, Isaiah has modeled grace in times of duress. He brought that grace as well as courage to the difficult issues that we've confronted at the school board this year. And most importantly, he has been willing to approach difficult topics with patience and as a learner as well as a teacher. In this way, he is a great model for our ends. And I encourage everybody to look at our ends policy. So we thank Isaiah for his service and wish him the very best in pursuit of higher education at Columbia. And he has left a proud legacy in the South Burlington School District. So we have a couple of things for you.
So I will read the plaque. We have this plaque, you come up here, I'll get it. I don't know if you wanted all this plastic bag. You gotta, so, we have this plaque, and I'll, I'll go ahead and read what it says. It says, "You were elected by your peers to represent them on the Board of School Directors. Your active participation and positive contributions during the past two years are evidence that their trust was well-placed. Leadership and service qualities such as yours are assets to be valued throughout one's life. We thank you for sharing them with us."[1555.62][1555.62](Applause).
So here's something else for you. You can open it so we can all see. Here, I'll put this back in your plastic bag. Now we get into the exciting stuff.[1656.52][1656.52](Laughter).
I want to let him pause.[1659.25][1659.25](Laughter).
One more win for these guys.[1663.41][1663.41](Cheers).[1664.41][1664.41](Applause).
So we're going to just take a pause for a few minutes. I think the rest of the agenda, I think, the committee is probably not excited about sticking around for this bit.[1691.02][1691.02](Laughter). So we'll just recess for five minutes. Thank you. Okay, we'll come back to order. The next on the budget is master planning and envisioning committee structure update. David?
So...
I noticed it does have a new date on it, June 7.
Yes, it does. June 7. Yep. So I would like to just call the board's attention to the document. I don't know if there's other copies. I don't know that there is. We will make sure that they're up on the, up on the, the web as well. So, board, what I provided here is an update. And the first page obviously identifies the four areas in which we were looking at that you need work done. This isn't by no means all of the work that's happened. You know that I've earlier provided kind of the cost per pupil analysis work for the, the three elementary schools. But what I've tried to do here is not just say it's more information or we're working on it, but give you a little bit more information. So page one are the four areas. Identifying specific needs for the high school and middle school. Number two, identifying and setting up a system to monitor key issues around the district's kind of future. Three is develop a contingency plan by December 31st of 17, specific to the Chamberlain School in the event or in and around kind of the airport-related matters. And then kind of revitalizing a strategic, strategic plan and looking at kind of a SWOT analysis on how decisions would be made going forward. That's page one. Page two gives you a little bit of a synopsis of where things... Page 2 gives you a little bit of a synopsis of where things are at.
The SWOT means what?
A strengths, weaknesses, opportunities analysis. And so Item 1 on Page 2 walks through kind of the specific needs for upgrades at the high school and middle school. The first budget had the $75,000 in it, and if you recall, we eliminated the costs, the $35,000. We have $40,000 in this now approved budget. And so Phase 1 will be to have a deeper dive on the structural, electrical, and mechanical functions of the high school and the middle school. At the same time, NIASC assessment will be going on around looking at program as well, along with our current facility stewardship plan, which is in play and we've been working on. A testament to those things that are most notable are probably the elevator projects, the window project, et cetera. So that will be happening in Phase 1. Phase 2, currently, as indicated, we have not reevaluated yet the $35,000 or what we will or will not include in, in the budget of the future, but that's certainly an area that we'll need to assess. I do have John Obbin working with me on developing threshold criteria around how to, how to help make some decisions related to that. So I'm happy to pause, and you asked me some questions along the way. Again, this is, the spirit of this is to give you a synopsis of where we are and what we're doing. So that, specific to Phase 1, we will be going out very soon with an RFP to begin that process of the structural, mechanical, and electrical evaluation. Item 2 is to identify and set up a system to monitor and report issues that might impact the district's ability to maintain or improve the quality of pre-K public education by September 1. Now, obviously, I haven't met that, but those specific areas around location and space associated with the Chamberlain School, what I've reported out here is the need to look at and dig deeper into the issues associated with the airport, specifically looking at the sound and contour line interval issues, the home insulation program, home buyout program, et cetera. I currently have some folks from Stitzel Paige and Fletcher working with me on this particular issue, and will be reporting that back out to you on an ongoing basis. Again, I've given you a little bit of that over time. So that's specific to the, to the airport. In regard to kind of moving along in those same issues, we have enrollment and population projections. So we, in the past, we did use a demographer when we went through master planning and visioning, and currently, we're in the process of having those population estimates and forecasts for the years 2000, from years 2015 all the way up to 2020, 25. Enrollment forecasts all the way out to 2027, and we'll be receiving a written report that will kind of pull together the information that was previously provided. So there's more, there's more work behind this around the things that we want to see happen. Because we went through it once before with McKibben, we want to make sure that we're providing every possible piece of information that could make our report as valuable as possible. So let me just pause. I'm sensing I see a question, maybe?
My question is, McKibben was the one who did our demographics the last time?
Correct.
Who said that enrollment should be down by now, and it seems to be moving slightly, staying flat or moving slightly in the opposite direction. Have they changed their methodology at all, or is this basically the same model that they used before plugging in any new data that we've given them?
So Bridgette, I don't want to claim to be a demographer or all of the data. It's, there's a very specific dataset that they use. We, we will provide them with kind of the information as of today, and where they, where they kind of, what we think went astray, and determine why that might have been. I think that's an important part of the validity of the demographic data. Again, I think there's some variability, and I don't know what the right variability should be or the right fluctuations that you can expect from demographer, demographic data. You know, they, again, I'm not an expert, but what I've come to learn is there's a lot about in-migration and, and out-migration. And so they track those patterns specific to the trending in the, in your area, in your county, and there's a coefficient that they, that they apply to that, and they will adjust that based on kind of a, a run rate, a period of time. Again, that's the best way in which I can kind of translate that to you. We, we want to make sure that we're really clear. I mean, there were some things we felt were accurate, and we think there were some things that maybe were, were less inaccurate, but that's part of their, their work as, as they, as they do this in the future. So again, it's, I think the, the most important stuff is looking at our own cohort tracking, how our students go from, you know, first grade to second grade, and we have our own data that we've been keeping track of, and where we see either increases or decreases over time. That's partly what I use currently on an, on a annual basis to look at what's happening at Rick Marcock going from first grade to second grade. We have grades where they seem to always pick up, you know, and we have grades where they seem to drop off. And again, I would love for the demographic data to be a little bit more informative to that. So we're going to ask them, we're going to ask them more about, you know, that, that collection and the, and the history of the data.
Yeah, I've got to...
Sam, I'm also concerned, how, you know, what are, what are we getting as a value from this, and what can we, you know, can we, can we trust what they give us in the future?
Well, I, I think, again, I'm not a demographer. They are a reputable, well-recognized group, and we, for many, many years, actually Vermont, for many, many years, has, has used an individual, used an individual by the name of Bill Smith, who did it on his own, free of charge for, for schools around the state of Vermont. And that was really the way in which the data, you know, was often populated and looked at. And so this is a step, first of all, Bill is retired and doesn't do it anymore, but we probably would keep, keep that with him. But this is an opportunity also that was connected to our master planning and visioning, and I think there is some level of validity in staying with the same, the same group. Yep.
I guess my concern about the model specifically, though, was that it, and it's a little bit vague, because it's been a few months since I really looked at that study, but my understanding was, as you said, it looked at in-migration, out-migration, maybe of Chittenden County, but it, it seemed to focus a lot on the broader context of Vermont. And South Burlington seems to be somewhat different than a lot of, even within the county, it's a place that has a lot of space left to develop. There are a lot of active plans to develop, you know, new housing, especially affordable housing, and I'm just a little concerned unless the model has changed in some way. I'm a little worried about the accuracy of it going forward. That's why I was kind of surprised to see their name pop up. Did we look at other firms, or was this sort of, as you said, a choice that was made because it was easier to, they've already got a lot of our data, so it would be a process of just updating our data with them?
Yes, I think they have our data, and I think one of the things that you, when you, when, if you can stay with the same group, then the data becomes more accurate. I think because they were so wed into our master planning and visioning, I think their data will become more accurate the second time around as opposed to starting new. That doesn't mean if you're a demographic, you know, consultant person, that you wouldn't come up with, you know, your firm couldn't come up with good information. I, I will tell you, I mean, I'm in my uncomfortable zone. I, I'm not an accountant, I don't know what kind of, or I'm not a statistician, but I know there's very, very specific rules and formulas that are in play that, that are long and complex around looking at live births, looking at the number of population, looking at, you know, your resident population. I mean, there's a long, long list. When I looked at, you know, they came up with this one number, and when I asked how they came up with the one number, you know, it was, it's, it's quite a process. That said, I think it's important that you, you folks have the opportunity, number one, you probably ought to review it again, and again, I don't know that all of you have had the opportunity to, to look at that and to ask some specific questions back through me, and then back to, here are my board's concerns specific to the demographic data, and we want to make sure we're really clear on the deliverable.
And I guess I, I would just like to get a sense of the variability around the outcomes and what the implications are for major capital expenditures. So if we can be plus or minus 5% of their projection and address it with just year-to-year hiring and handle it within our existing infrastructure, I'm a lot less concerned than if, you know, I mean, I think 2025, so we're talking a projection seven, eight years out. If we're going to be making, you know, multi-tens of million-dollar decisions on infrastructure investment based on that, you know, really, what level of variability does that encompass? You know, 2,400 FT or whatever equivalent students, is it plus or minus 5% of that, plus or minus 10% of that? What can we absorb within our existing footprint? And what, where would we have to start really planning, you know, to spend real money to, to handle?
Yeah. I think it's a fair question. You know, what I want to say here is that it's important that we don't have one component that we're looking at and making decisions, and part of, you know, tied into Item Number 2 is look at systems for monitoring, one of which is significantly important, don't get me wrong, is our demographic data and the population in which we are currently serving and what we expect to be serving in the future, and how we then make decisions based on the housing stock in the area, you know, all of the other factors that are associated with that. So what I'm trying to do, and again, perhaps haven't indicated that with enough clarity, is looking at kind of a comprehensive way for us to make some decisions in the future. And as much as I'd like to say it, I want it to be 100% accurate, we all know that, and I, and I'm the first to say, our kindergarten enrollments have always been like, wow, we really blew that, you know? We planned for 40 and 32 came in, or, you know, we planned for 40 and we got 56 in. How, how can that be so off? But again, part of that is understanding the story that we had, you know, five, you know, families with X number of children come, come in from California, you know, and what made their decision? You know, that's, those are some of the, the in-migration patterns that, you know, I don't, I don't know that we'll ever put our finger right on it.
David, I have a request. Can, if, if there is a post-assessment of their analysis and a summary of what went wrong, when they, when they forecast a 4% decline and we ended up with a 1% increase, is, is there some kind of post-mortem that they did in which they figured out, all right, what did they do wrong, and, and how they can correct it in the future? Is there any sort of information like that out there, and if not, can, can we get that?
All right, and I want to be careful that we're not really over-analyzing this, because oftentimes, three percentage points is margin of error. So I'd like to get a sense of the tolerances, too, you know, and just, and then understand what size deviation from their central tendency drives, you know, there's a certain amount that can be absorbed with relatively short-term, relatively non-permanent decisions, and then there's probably wider deviation that, you know, we're starting, again, starting to make really important, longer-term decisions. So how significant? I mean, I, I agreed, you know, the projection was favorable for us as opposed to the forecast, but how much of that is noise?
Yep. Good question. And what was their methodology in coming up with that forecast? As a board member, I probably should not get into it, but it's my job, my day job, so...
Certainly, you know, looking at the report and providing some feedback or, or questions would be appropriate as we begin the process. I think the other, the, the other thing that I would want to say to you is that I know that, and I think this is probably customary with people, you know, the companies doing this work, they have on, on more than one occasion requested the data, you know, on where, where were, where, can you send us the September or October 1 data, right? We aren't paying them anymore, but they, they use that then for their confidence formulas or whatever, and tweak that. So I know, I know it's tricky business. I, I know that, you know, when I often would first look at it, I would say, oh, it doesn't seem right to me, but then, you know, when I dug deeper, it certainly, the methodology seemed, seemed sound. So that's enrollment and population, so I would love to leave it that board members, if you have questions, we're, we're about to reactivate that currently. It's about a $4,000 endeavor, so it doesn't reach the $15,000 where I need to, you know, bring it back to you, and I, I feel like the continuity is important, and I'm gonna, I'd like to begin that process, you know, ASAP.
So, so a separate concern. Obviously, yes, the demographics are important for all the schools, including Chamberlain, but what the board has been asking for, for a while, and if you can give us an update on, on where we are with this, is having a baseline for the, the noise, and it's, and not just what level of the noise, the line that might be there, but, but information about the actual impacts at the school. You know, what is the noise within the, the building, and what are the impacts of the noise on, on either health or education outcomes? And if you could give me input on, on how you're approaching that, I'd appreciate it.
So some of this, you know, I'm not going to get into the specifics, you know, some of it's, you know, tied up with some...
Thanks, Isaiah. Happy trails to you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can use that sometime.
So on, on the airport issue, Martin, again, as I said, there are some things that are tied up in conversation specific with some attorneys. What I can say is that we, we do know and we do want informed information about the airport. The airport noise on Chamberlain has been there for a long time. F-16s are green mountain noise fly out of there on an ongoing basis and have for many, many years. That said, as far as the tolerance for the classroom teachers, we call this the, you know, I don't call it, the classroom teachers call it the pause, the instructional pause. And it's, you know, as you can imagine, when the jets fly, it's like you trying to talk in the parking lot when it's so loud, you, you just can't talk over anyone, you have to just do the pause. And classroom teachers and students, again, I've witnessed it, I am not part of that, but I've witnessed that pause. And I think to your point, moving forward, particularly as homes have been taken over there, what, what are the implications moving forward if more homes take, are taken out? Does that change the sound decibel? Currently, the day-night noise level, the DNL lines, these are the contour lines that are driven, are drawn, the, about 65 and the 68, this school falls between the 65 and the 70 decibel sound level. All of those would qualify for sound mitigation. Currently, however, what we don't know is we, I don't know, I don't know about the F-35 contour, what will change. Now, the EIS study, which the previous board was involved in, understood that the contour lines were going to get better with the F-35 data, with the F-35 aircraft. They were, the, the contour of their noise, they were slightly louder, but they got out earlier, they, they, the day-night noise factor was less. That doesn't mean they're not louder, but the exposure over time is, is the, the piece. So one of the things, and again, I'm not going to go too deep on this, but I want to know, we want to know, what are the effects of the F-35, and we want to know the immediate sound level. It's not the right terminology, but what's the immediate sound level? And that's, that's a factor associated with health conditions, that if it's going to be significantly louder, or, or any, any, any change, any louder, we, we need to know that, and at what factor is that going to then kind of indicate that we need to be doing something different? Now, we can say we can sound mitigate the inside of our building, but as you all know, we want kids to be, you know, coming and going to school, and we also want them to be outside of school. Similarly, we have staff, community members, et cetera, that use our facility as well. So those are the things that we're currently, we're currently working on, and we want, I want, I am working, you know, diligently to try to get the F-35 data. What we've been told by the FAA, by the airport in Burlington is that that's expected to come sometime in 2018. And what we, what I want is that's, that's, we need it sooner than that. These noise levels are not ones that are done, you don't have to actually have the, the aircraft on-site. There's modeling, computer modeling, for lack of better terminology. This can be done based on the, you know, the configurations of your home and your airport, et cetera. So that's kind, that's where we're currently at, and we're in the process of wanting to request this pretty quickly so that it can factor into not only enrollment, but also some of these other decisions that are upon us in master planning and visioning. some of these other decisions that are upon us in master planning and visioning.
So, but I, and I appreciate that, and that is important work that's been going forward. And I also understand that we've had a lot of distractions over the last few months, obviously, so we haven't been able to get into this nearly as much as we hoped for and anticipated. But I'm still not clear that what you're talking about, and maybe it's, I'm just not getting it, which is completely possible, on whether there are threats to the health and education outcomes to the students caused by the location and/or physical space of the school. And it seems that that work, to understand that, has to have some sort of consultant, some sort of analysis within the walls of the building and on recess, on whether that location and the physical space is in fact causing any kind of detrimental effect. And I don't know what you've talked about is getting at that. And what, just want, is, and if that's not possible, if that's asking for too much, which it may be, you know, maybe that's just not something that's really possible to get, then, then I think we need, you know, the board needs to know. But unless I'm missing something, this is really focused on, well, what is the sound level going to change and how is that going to change? But that's not telling me really what is happening necessarily with our students, if that makes sense.
There's been no significant change in the sound levels for the last probably 10 years. I mean, that said, I don't, I mean, obviously, wind direction, home, number of homes that are currently, you know, in the way between that location, there could be a slight change, but there's been no change in those levels thus far. That said, they have, as through the noise study, they came out with those day-night DNL lines, those day-night lengths, lines, and provided that. So we're simply, and those lines have identified where sound mitigation can take place, but I think fundamentally, going forward, we want to know what is going to be the change. It's not so much that there's a health impairment right now.
Well, that's, all right, so that, that is, my first question is whether in fact we are, there are harms to the education or health outcomes from the location or the physical space right now, and if you're, if, whatever the answer is, yes or no, what is the backup support for that conclusion? Because that gives us the baseline for, you know, watching changes and, and weigh in if I'm not getting this, but that, I mean, but that I think needs to be the focus.
That's what we're, again, I think anything with the sound contours, embedded in the sound contours is health conditions related to the effects of sound, period. I think it would probably be better to, instead of saying health impact, I think we want to talk about educational, you know, distractions, educational missed opportunities. Because as I said in the previous, I provided the board information about the amount of minutes. If you add up, I'm just going to say, how many seconds, Kathy? About 15 seconds every time they're, 10 seconds every time they're moving? So I, I, I got feedback from, from staff, sorry to put you on the spot, Kathy, but there were, I added that up, and every day of school kind of exposure, total number of minutes lost. And again, classroom teachers can't talk over the planes. So I think it's, we can talk about health conditions, we can talk about lost instructional time, and that in and of itself, I think, has a disadvantageous place to go. So, you know, I'm going to continue to dig into what I can. I know there's a lot of schools around the country that are within, you know, similar contour line factors. I'm taking a little bit further in wanting to know what the contour will change, and I want to know a little bit more about not just the DNL line, I want to know, for lack of better terminology, I want to know what the immediate impact or immediate noise impact is.
Right.
You follow me? For, and if that's a decibel, we will look at the decibels that might be harmful to an individual, right? Sustained, high-pitched, high-loud noises can be damaging to an individual. We want to know that too, and that's not necessarily computed only in the, in DNL, there's other factors associated with noise. So this would be a noise consultant that we hope to engage.
Yeah. I mean, no, I think you understand my concern, and it's just a matter of making sure that we're actually trying to measure the impacts we actually are seeing, if any, within, within the school. So I think I've...
I clearly understand that there's the current now health impact, and as you figure out, as whatever happens in the future, is it better or worse? But bottom line is, is there a health impact now? Or is there significant, you know, lost opportunities for learning?
Right. And it's, and it's, it's building the data because over the course of the master planning and visioning, there was more anecdotes than there was actual data about what's going on at Chamberlain. And if we had something a little more solid, then it helps us with our decision. So, thank you.
Yep. So that's, that's item two. And again, I've tried to give you a little update there. Item three, which is a contingency plan by December 31st of 17, which is fast approaching, this is looking at contingency, and certainly what we just talked about is critically important to that, right? So my ability to get information from the FAA, my ability to get more information on sound, you know, information that will then arrive at making some determining factors around, coupled with enrollment, coupled with, you know, programmatic needs, coupled with budgetary resources, as I provided you already on kind of the cost per pupil differences, et cetera, coupled with how we are currently configured as three zones in our, in our city. That is fast approaching. And so that's, that's, that's a pretty specific goal there. Questions, Steve?
Yeah, I was just wondering, David, so just thinking, do you, are you sort of beginning to vision what, or have ideas on what kind of options one, two, and three would be if we needed to do something, what is it, the autumn of 2019 is when the F-35s actually deploy?
Yeah.
And if we found we needed to move pretty quickly, do we have some sense as to what that might entail? Like an obvious one, you know, do you divvy up the kids at Chamberlain to Orchard and Marquette? Does that even, is that even feasible?
Right. So there's some things that we did as a result of master planning and visioning when we looked at kind of configurations. Obviously, I think, you know, communication is critically important to our families, but if, for whatever reason, if we just say Chamberlain is no longer an appropriate place for, for student learning to happen, what would we do? Obviously, we would look at all of our schools, this school and the other two elementaries to see if we could, you know, figure out how to absorb that balance. And certainly, that will be something that I'll come back to you with around, number one, a kind of contingency plan, which might not be the best educational plan, but then it would be coupled with an educational plan that might be one that would be the next step. Again, I think if we recognize there's significant issues at Chamberlain, what's the, what can we do immediately? I think you'd like to know that. But that would be the immediate decision. If it could be the best decision, then that would be even better, but that contingent plan that will then lead into a more futuristic plan is what I think you're looking for. So I, that's, that's what I will come up with. And, yeah, I do think there's some possibilities there.
I guess that's it. I read contingency a little differently than master planning and visioning. I kind of remember the various options, but that was looking at the whole configuration of the school district for long-term, steady-state posture. This is, oh my goodness, or maybe even the sound studies wrong.
That's right.
And we realize we have to do something in response. So, yeah, contingency, I think of contingent upon something happening and possibly in the short term, so.
Yep. And then the last is talking about the strategic plan and really evaluating that based on a SWOT analysis, which I've already started, I provided some level of detail to the board some time ago. And this, again, all needs to kind of connect all of the dots. So where are we at in enrollment configuration, kind of on a, on a scale of everything's fine to starting to become a problem to extreme problem? Same thing on, on budgetary matters, same thing on, you know, on compatibility of the school, i.e. noise, et cetera. And to be able to have a kind of a, for lack of a better word, I didn't call it this, it keeps sticking in my brain, but a decision rubric. That's not what I called it. John, what was our term? I'm putting you on the spot, but we came up with a, with a term here that was more appropriately linked to, you know, kind of that, that decision-making rubric. It's not, not what I called it, but...
I'm kind of spacing, I knew we did have something.
Yeah. And we put up a draft, kind of a plan together for you. So that, that's kind of a quick update. I certainly need to dig more into this. We're in the process, as I said earlier, with more activity at the airport, more activity, we're winding up with the demographic data and want to try to pull these pieces together. So...
So, I mean, one, just one final comment is that I know that the concept in part was to have committees or subcommittees working with the superintendent. I'm not sure what, what the game plan or thought of that, not that I want another subcommittee right at this moment. I think we're a little, a little, a little tapped out, you know, so, but keep that kind of on...
Well, I think, I mean, one of the things I think about, so I think the subcommittee works is important, but I don't think the subcommittee should be doing a lot of the ground, you know, getting a lot of the data ready. I think once we have the data, then it will be, you know, helping to look at certain composite, you know, information and how we, how we're putting it together, right? And I think that will be, that will be an important component as we move forward.
The only thing I would say, though, is that the subcommittee could be potentially helpful, whichever, whichever subcommittee in whichever specific area we're talking about, because it would probably be more than one subcommittee, would be helpful potentially in formulating what data we even need and what the board would need to, to make a decision. So I agree that I don't want to raise our hands for gathering data, but in terms of guiding sort of the framework for gathering that data and saying, you know, these are the things that we would like to see tracked or gathered or as inputs to the overall strategic planning process. I'm just a little worried that if we wait and we don't really give input on that, that we'll get pretty far down the road and we'll just sort of be said, we told, this is the data we have, so we have to use this data to make the decision. When if we had been involved earlier in the process, we might be, have been able to say, this is the information that would help me make a decision or, or that might bring us to conclusion on some of these, these items.
Well, pardon, again, I think we'll have that opportunity as we continue to roll that forward. We could make, you know, some small committee, you know, over the summer, we could be looking at that, the demographic data, it could be some of the evaluation of kind of the strategic plan, kind of the decision-making rubric. So again, I don't have it all necessarily formulated on how, what, how that, or what committee or how that could be looked at. What I know is that we need to pull some, we need to pull this data together, and some of it's pretty, I think, pretty concrete. You need to get enrollment data and you need to get it as predictable as possible. You need to get information about what the building can, the buildings can entail, the high school, middle school. I mean, certainly, we could have a subcommittee and you could, you could talk about it, but likely you're not structural electrical engineers that are going to say yes or no. But once that comes in, then it might be, ooh, there's another area that we'd like to ask about, you know? It could be something about the properties that surround us, school 1, 2, 3, et cetera. And so I think some of that will start once we have that formulated. Again, my purpose tonight was really to give you a kind of a little bit deeper dive than I have before. We've been distracted, I've been distracted, we've been working on it, but...
So just one other point on the, on the subcommittee. I mean, I, I mean, I would like to see some, some board involvement, just, just the conversation about what we're trying to do at Chamberlain might be helpful to have that perspective. But again, we're pretty tapped out, and I would seriously consider whether we could enlist some prior board members to help us on some of these subcommittees, because I know that Julie and Patrick and Dan and Diane have all been involved in these various, very issues, so they, they kind of understand the board perspective, maybe one board member, current board member...
And a volunteer.
And a volunteer, and we'll put some pressure on them to volunteer.
A lot of pressure.
A lot of pressure. So just because I think this is kind of the next thing, well, we have negotiations as well, but this is one of the next things we really need to focus on. So ponder, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to come across defensive at all, I'm trying to figure this out, you know?
Well, no, and that's why, that's why, and I don't want to say, yeah, and I don't want to frame this as, you know, we want to watch everything you're doing. I'm just saying, for example, if we have more people in the room, it's not left on your plate to sort of figure all this out and what would be helpful to us. So for example, and this is just one of a few examples of things that are bouncing around in my head, you know, we need to look at the structural components, for example, the different schools, but we also need to think creatively about multi-age classrooms or, you know, other things that, that aren't necessarily going to be in the purview of a contractor or, you know, somebody that we've got from outside working on it. And those are things, just brainstorming ideas about these different ways of approaching a contingency plan or, you know, approaching the, the Chamberlain situation, for example, that would be good to have out there on the table early in the process. And they may all get eliminated, you know, as we go through the process, but some of them might require gathering additional data or additional feedback from parents or additional things that we could be simultaneously processing with the, the stuff that we're having the contractors do and the stuff that we're having a sound consultant do and those kinds of things. And if we have more people sort of brainstorming at the beginning and helping run those different multiple streams of work, it just might draw us to a faster and more effective conclusion. I like the idea, by the way, of pulling in previous board members.
They're very qualified.
Well, again, I have, I think you've given me some good direction, that was the purpose of the, kind of the update. And so I, I'll, I'll work with, with my staff and also I hear you loud and clear about, you know, past board member and maybe one other board member to help in this regard. Appreciate the feedback.
I'll start working on them. So we're moving on to executive limitations, policy monitoring, it's warned for action. And I noticed that there weren't a lot of changes in here, it's just a question really upfront about the interpretation. Is that where we are? Is this where we left this and this is where we are now?
That's correct.
Or is there something else that I was missing?
Nope. I have Stuart is with us as well.
Thank you for setting out this nice table for me here.
Yes, very nice. So I didn't really frankly understand what the parenthetical question meant, but...
Well, what it was is at the last meeting, one of the things Elizabeth said is, we like to refer to it as the district ends, but actually, when this policy was passed, the wording used was board ends, not district ends, which makes that the official policy. If you want it to be district ends, we can interpret it that way.
Right.
All we can do is tell you to warn it and change the policy.
Kind of semantics, but, you know...
So really, it says, okay, all right.
It, it's interesting. I wasn't, I wasn't here when this particular one, but I think it was one of the last policies, actually, most districts with policy governance don't have this policy, so, because I know, because I've checked around. And so I think it was done at a certain point and somebody just missed that, you know, as it were.
So, oh, I, wait, so, so let me, I see. So you're, you're saying we've said board up in the...
Board ends.
Policy. Well, why don't we put this back on the agenda for Elizabeth to decide next time?
It's fine with me, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, this, yeah, I, I, or, or we can, could this be considered first reading? No, we have to warn it as first reading, right?
Right.
It's not, it's not that complicated to do three readings and change it?
No, I just, just letting you know, I can't change it.
Yeah, right, right, I got you. No, that, that makes sense.
Do the other, do the other board members understand what we're talking about? It's simply the naming of board, district board, district or board ends. I mean, they're, they're the board's ends, and I then go forward and carry out those ends. So when we were using district ends, that was, that was where the conflict was.
So is there anywhere else in, in the policies that we talk about board versus district ends?
No, because the rest of the policy, you know, deals specifically with the curriculum, and I mean, the main changes that happened since last time was some additional evidence.
No, no, I just mean in all the policies.
Oh, in all the policies, I think they, they vary, I mean, you'd have to look...
Yeah, here we are, financial planning and budgeting, material, deviate materially from the board's ends priorities. Well, that's different, that's ends priorities, not...
We probably didn't look at this as deep in the past, but, you know, we're just trying to be consistent going forward, that it should be consistent. It's not the district's ends, it's the board's ends. The board sets the policy and then the administration carries it out.
Oh, you think it should remain the board's ends?
Well, again, I think that's the, I mean, that's essentially the, the question. Well, I, again, I think that's the, I mean, that's essentially the, the question in front of you.
So why don't we warn this, you know, when we get to the agenda, warn it for first reading and we can have that debate?
Yep.
On whether, what to call it. The, the other question is if there are, if we're going to warn to change this policy, are there any other suggestions that you might have or any of the board members on whether anything else needs to change in the policy?
Okay.
I mean, if, if in fact we're going to go ahead and warn it.
Yep, it's fine, Martin.
So if everybody, I mean, unless you have something right now, otherwise get ahold of, I guess, Stuart before the next board meeting.
Just a quick question to clarify what we're doing. We're considering changing where it says board here and here to district. Is that right?
Right, in, in the policy itself.
Yes.
Right.
We can't do that, that's the issue, right? I, I don't, I'm not privy to, I can't change, nor Stuart, we can't change the policy.
I know, yes.
But I, I, I do want to say, you know, and I, I mean, we could check the website. I actually do think the ends in the policy on the board's website are the district ends, not the board ends. When we did the final update of them, that was the language we used.
And it should be considered the district's ends because it was a community process to come up with them and it wasn't just the board. So yeah, let's, let's do that. And if, if we have additional changes, if we don't get to it until then, we can come at first reading and say, we also want this and it doesn't push back.
Yeah, I just want to be sensitive to the timeframe that we're in and we're, we're also trying to follow, you know, we're upon end of the school year and we're trying to move forward, you know, based on our calendar.
Right. So, so I would just, you know, change district unless somebody comes to you or if you have some other changes you think should be done with the policy.
Good, we got it. Thank you, Martin.
All right, moving on to update on negotiations. Do you want to give us an update, Bridget, on...
So I'm trying to think what we've, all that we've done since we, since we last met. So since we last had a board meeting, we have met with the support staff once or twice since the last meeting, once since the last meeting. And seem to be making progress in, in those negotiations. We've had TAs on several of the work rule, sort of the smaller changes in the contract. We are still working on salary and healthcare and they are, you know, actively analyzing the board's proposal. And we have another meeting scheduled with support staff on Monday, sort of a, a double meeting, if you will, to try to really work through especially healthcare. And, and Martin and I have a planning session tomorrow with legal counsel to sort of prepare for that. And then do you want me to cover teachers as well?
Yeah, if you just define what TAs are.
Oh, sorry.
I can't remember what they stand for.
Tentative agreements, tentative agreements. So the way the negotiations process works is there, there are all these different proposals about different sections of the contract. And we come to what they call tentative agreements on the sections that we've agreed, you know, in theory on, and then it all comes together at the end and we agree on a final contract. But those TAs kind of get signed as we go along, just to sort of say, those, those are agreed and we're not going to come back to them and we're, we're moving ahead. So things are moving ahead while there. Martin and I spent, was it really just yesterday? Martin and John and David and I were with the teachers yesterday for fact-finding. So that's part of the negotiations process. If we can't come to an agreement, first we go to mediation, which we did back on May 15th. We still didn't come to an agreement, so we're getting more help. It actually ends up being the same person in this negotiation process. It isn't always, but it's the same person who is the mediator is the fact-finder in this process, Ira Lobel. So we sat with Ira across the table from the teachers' union and we each made our proposals, step by step, each of the proposals that are still on the table. We presented evidence to Ira about why we wanted each of these proposals and what our reasoning was. And Ira will, for the next, he didn't really give us an exact deadline. He said another few days, basically. We have a few days to kind of get back to him with any other supporting evidence that we didn't feel like we provided in that meeting. He will go away and write a fact-finding report, which he indicated should be out within about a month, so probably sometime early July, we should expect to see that from him. And then there's sort of a quiet period where both sides have about 10 days to review that fact-finding report. And then hopefully we'll move forward with negotiations, using that as, as sort of another piece of evidence, if you will, as we move forward in those negotiations. The fact-finding report is non-binding, so he'll come out in that report and kind of tell us what he thinks on each of the issues. But it's still incumbent upon us and the teachers' union to come to an agreement on each of the items that are outstanding. So we're expecting that process to really start again in sort of late July, early August timeframe.
Yeah, that's great.
So that's kind of where we are.
The only thing I'd add is we'll see if during the veto session in the legislature, if the governor tries to take away part of what we're trying to bargain. So that's on the 21st and 22nd. And that's why he vetoed this, is he wants to negotiate the healthcare. So, moving on to the reviewing topics for the other paper articles, and I really can't remember where we were on last time and who was up to bat. Was it Alex? Were you, no, you're going to be doing one at some point. And I apologize that your post didn't get put up yet. We will, but now we will get it up. We will, we will put it up on the Facebook, because we need material now. So, yeah, yeah, so that's great. I, do you have where we, oh, here we are, okay.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, this, this was, this is now past. I don't really have any others, we had other topics.
Next one is July, though?
Yep. And, you know, we had some of those. I was thinking just...
Oh, at the end of June, I'm sorry, yeah.
I was just thinking maybe there is some, an opportunity for, you know, thank you, you know, appreciation to the community, that's a possibility. It doesn't have to be like that, but that's a possibility. I also think there's an opportunity about some of the things that are going to be happening over the course of the summer. You know, we've got a variety of things happening that will be facility-oriented, Rick Marcot in Market Street reconstruction, starting reconstruction on Heinsberg Road, that intersection. We could do a little bit of update that way, but that's not really jazzy, I don't know, but...
You just jogged my memory. Actually, I spoke with Elizabeth earlier today when she was in the airport and she did wonder if it was possible for us to turn around something very short and whether Judy might be able to make room for something, just to say thank you to the community and, and for all the work that was done during the budgeting process and whether someone went to raise their hand to write, just, well, first of all, to reach out to Judy and make sure that that would be okay with her. And then whether someone raised their hand to write that, thank you.
I think, I mean, that could be a, a letter to the editor, I would assume.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
And I think we're allowed, like, once a month of, or there's a timeframe, but we haven't had a letter to the editor in quite some time. Am I right? Cool, thanks, Corey. Thanks, Corey.
You know, it could be something that all of you sign too, I suppose, but...
No, they don't let you do that.
Yeah.
It's got to be one person.
That's true.
I would suggest that we draft it on behalf of Elizabeth. Want, want you and I to talk and we'll...
Okay.
Something together to have it submitted.
So that would then sort of take that one off the, off the list for actual articles. That would be coming next.
Yeah, right, so now we have to come up with an article. Steve, Steve, what do you want, what do you want to write about?
I'm overdue.
What do you want to write about? So am I, but I'm going to be gone for next week.
You're doing negotiations, so yeah, I'm overdue and I think summer homework is a nice, I mean, it, it's a good placeholder topic anyway. Mundane perhaps, but also informative. And so, yeah, what's, what are the, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm a, deadlines in front of me.
Oh, deadline is June 29th.
Okay, so that wouldn't be the thank you, that would be a different one, so. June 29th actually works perfectly.
We'll probably try to get a, a letter to the other paper by the end of the week.
Okay.
In terms of the shifting of topics, I sent an email to Ms. Fitzgerald and Mr. Young that I'm actually going to be embarking on an exchange trip to Australia at the end of the month and I'll be missing the first month of school, we're discussing in terms of attendance and stuff, but I wasn't sure if I should let the whole board know. But in terms of writing that other paper article on recruiting a student rep board member or, or explaining the process or what it's been like, we were thinking about shifting that. I don't remember if it was earlier or later. I believe it was earlier, but since we're discussing the timeline right now, I'm pretty sure that's, we were considering moving that. I can still write that while I'm in Australia or while, over the summer, you know, but as we're on this topic.
So, so is that, did you talk about having it in September or, or August or...
I bel, I believe it was in August. I should double-check the email. But what, what time, I don't have the paper in front of me, what time was I scheduled to do it or what time was I penciled in to do it?
I don't have that.
Is that not on there?
I don't have it with me.
Oh, sorry.
I apologize.
These are just the published dates, it was one of the drafts that we had done earlier. I don't know.
If not, we can continue to communicate.
It would be good that between, I mean, sooner rather than, it would be great to try to get, what is it like to be, you know, in the position and then how do people, how can people apply process?
Yeah.
And I think it could be a, a nice opportunity to, to get some folks that are going to be moving up. You know, we've got Isaiah leaving and you're moving up and there's an open seat. I, I don't know, I think it could be a nice little...
So is it possible that, I mean, not in the next week and a half? I assume you have finals and projects and summer coming, but is it possible to draft something in advance? Do you know enough? And, and, I mean, it could be pre-written for August, you know, before you leave, so you don't have that hanging over your head when you're...
Sure. I do leave the 18th, so I'm thinking I would be working on it during, well, sorry, I, I'm also going on a summer trip on vacation to Spain and then I'm coming back and then going to Australia.
Wow, I want your life.
Going to Michigan, if we're going to say this.
Yeah, I'm going to Michigan, Canada.
We're visiting family.
There's anything wrong with Michigan.
So I, I can absolutely be working on that during my stay there over the summer and be in communication over email. But I, I can absolutely do that.
And if you're having too much fun, just let us know.
I mean...
No, well, not that I, I want and we'll, we'll find something else.
I'm going to have some downtime.
It's beautiful this time of year.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's good.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
But yeah, that can be done.
Great. All right, so...
So I'll do the June 29th.
Yes, do you know what you're writing? Did you say what you're writing?
Well, it's, how about summer homework as a placeholder and if somebody comes up with a better idea, though.
And Martin, I know that I have my Act 60 write-up.
Yes, yes, yes.
Drafted, it's, it needs revision and...
So we could have that for, we should have that possibly in, well, we'll look, I mean, it depends on some other things and what, what's going on, but I assume that August would work.
Whenever it fits.
The 27th of July? Well, I'll write that one down to Alex in Act 68. You got to explain it in 600 words. Maybe, maybe they'll give you 700 words.
We'll see.
If it's really good and, you know, so. Excellent. Are we good? I noticed that my name's not on there until, man, I escaped, that's good. All right, so moving on, set agenda for the June 21st meeting.
You got it, and you're packing? Somewhere in there, yeah?
Yeah, I don't think we see it. I see a lot of minutes, but...
Lots of minutes, but I'm not seeing the, I'm not seeing the, yeah.
I have seen it. I just didn't tab it for today.
I was hoping to put all the boring things on for that and it should last at least four or five hours to get all the work done, because I won't be here, so.
Anybody found it yet?
No.
No.
Sorry about that. I'm pretty sure, looking at it earlier.
So, do you want to...
Punt?
Consult with Elizabeth about what she wants on that?
Yeah.
Except just to make sure you add the first reading of...
Yes.
2.10.
I don't know. Why, sorry, we just had it here.
And take budget communications off.
Gotcha.
Couple of months until we start the process again.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so let's move on to future agenda items. Are there any changes that we want to make to that? Hearing none, I'm going to move ahead. All right, let's, let's start going through the minutes. We've got a whole bunch of them. Any questions or comments or input on the meeting minutes of May 8th? Seeing none, the May 8th minutes are, what's the word I use?
Approved.
Approved, thank you, approved by consensus. The minutes from May 10th, meeting from May 10th are, is there any input on that one? Seeing none, those minutes are approved for May 10th by consensus. The minutes for May 15th, any questions on that one? That one's straightforward by consensus, that one is also approved. The minutes for May 17th, any questions or comments? Nope, that one looks good, so by consensus, the minutes for May 17th are adopted. The minutes for May 22nd, no questions there, we're going to adopt that one or approve that one by consensus. And it goes on and on. May 23rd minutes, that one is approved by consensus. I love this, this is awesome. May 24th minutes, nothing? No, good? That's approved by consensus. And finally, May 30th, how many meetings was that?
Well, a lot of these are...
Everybody get that?
Well, a lot of these be, because there was three, more than two board members that were warned and they were in planning.
Yeah, a number of them are negotiation, planning and negotiations and fact-finding. So, May 30th is, is approved by consensus. There we go, excellent. So I do also notice on our consent agenda, we have some retirements, if you could speak to that, David?
So, under your consent agenda, you have some, a new hire.
And a new hire, right.
Genevieve Gallagher. You have a leave of absence of Joanie Wales for point eight FTE, she's art teacher at Chamberlain. Then you have resignation slash retirements, Nancy Lines, she's currently, has been a longtime math teacher here at the middle school. Michelle Sheen, a 1.0 nurse at Rick Marcot. And then Steve Webster, a point two of an FTE for him as an information technology educator in the district. So those are the, the three, obviously, anyone who's departing either through resignation or retirement, we often, as I always say, send a, a letter on behalf of their service. Some are longer than others, but we still thank them on your behalf, our behalf. We would do that as well.
Appreciate that. Any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, that is approved by consensus. Moving on to number 18, accounts payable orders, are there any questions on the accounts payable orders? Seeing none. So at this point, I'm just going to ask, I have an expert school board member in, in the audience, Wendell. And so what is the appropriate procedure for us to move without adjourning this meeting to go into executive session without having to call for executive session when I still have the public in here? Do I just say, we're moving to another room and then we go into executive session?
Not quite.
Okay.
I was looking at your minutes and I think you've been doing your own.
Well, that's, no, and that's why I'm asking, because you emailed me. No, I know I don't adjourn, okay?
Take a motion to go into executive session and under the new version of the open meeting law, you very specifically state the reason why it would be...
Right, right.
Put you at an unfair disadvantage to do this in open session.
But, but then.
Take a motion to go in.
Well, no, I, but, but then we're in executive session and we have the public, we have the public.
We can sit here and wait for you to come back or we can leave, but you're still going to have to adjourn when you come back.
Am I allowed to talk to you after I've taken the motion and gone into executive session?
You can go into executive session. You can come back out here. You have to come back out here technically. And you're back in open meeting. Executive session is over. You just declared that you're out of executive session and the meeting is still running. If there's somebody here you want to talk to, you may do that.
Well, but when I, when we've, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, but this is something that's been bothering me for only five or six years. Is that we, we take a motion to go into executive session and then I say, thank you, Corey, I've just violated my executive session. I, you know, I shouldn't have said hello to anybody. And, and tonight I, I do want to say hello to my wife before she leaves and I want to make sure I'm not violating.
It's all right, because you're not conducting anything that would be, would place you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. And then we're going to take a motion here? Do I have to make the motion here or?
No, make a motion to go into executive session.
All right, I want a motion to go into executive session in five minutes. Does that work?
Yeah, or I would go, I would recess and then I'd come back there and do it, but it works.
All right, Wendell accepts that. I'll take a motion to go into executive in five minutes.
So moved. So, Mr. Chair, since we've already had the line of questioning and since we've got Wendell here.
Yeah.
It's also bothered me, when we're in executive session, I believe sometimes we actually make a motion to come out. I don't believe you're allowed to conduct any business in executive session. You just come out.
I think that's true. You just come out.
That's right.
So when we're in executive session, you just come out of it. You don't make a motion to come out.
Come out, because you can't. There we go. We're going to start running things really well here. Thanks, Wendell.
You're welcome.